Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is the May 1st, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Can we have the roll?
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandy Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from Monday, March 6th. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Pulis, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion passes. Next up are disclosures. Commissioner Eber.
None to disclose.
Commissioner Pulis.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
No disclosures.
And Commissioner George.
I was intended to abstain from the minutes vote due to the fact I had not yet been seated at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Commissioner Ron.
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for myself either. At this point, next on our agenda is the annual election of officers, but I think we might look to move that with some other agenda changes if there's a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to reorder the agenda, moving item 2C, the annual election, to the very end of the agenda. And also to combine cases 2023-0024 and case 2023-0020. And to move case 2023-0030 to the beginning of the public hearing as that case was postponed
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner George. Any objection to the motion to reorder? Okay, seeing no objection, that motion passes. I'll need to mark my sheet accordingly here. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public hearing items. Before we begin, I will read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive 5 minutes. Individuals receive 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director. Within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record, a written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103050A.4.A. Commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Following approval of the written findings of fact and decision, any party of interest may, within 20 days, file an appeal by filing a notice of appeal and paying the appeal fee and deposit in accordance with Section 2103050. The notice of appeal must be filed with the planning director on a form prescribed by the municipality. If the appellant is not the applicant, the appellant's notice of appeal shall include proof of service on the applicant. So the first public hearing item on the reordered agenda is case 2023-0030. And I think for this one, we have a request to postpone from the petitioner's representative. And does that, we look for a motion then to postpone? Question for staff.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to postpone? Commissioner Spinelli.
I move to postpone.
So the motion is to postpone case 2023-0030, and it looks like we're set to postpone to the June 5th, 2023, meeting per the petitioner's request. Motion is seconded by Commissioner Krishna, and we'll just go ahead and call a vote.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes with seven votes in favor. Brings us to cases 2023-0024 and 2023-0020, which have been combined. That will double the time allotments that I explained earlier. Can we have a report from staff, please?
Thank you. This is a request from the Peterson Group for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone to follow. The comprehensive plan amendment must be decided before action is taken on the rezone. The parcel is located at the southeast corner of Lower Road in Lakota's Parkway and contains approximately 2.1 acres of land. Case 2023-0024 is a request to amend the land use designation that is currently classified as compact mixed residential low and the Anchorage 2040 land use plan map to compact mixed residential medium. This comprehensive plan amendment will allow a corresponding rezone from R2MSL, mixed residential with special limitations, to R3 mixed residential, being heard under case 2023-0020. The planning department is recommending approval for the corresponding rezone. On March 16, 2023, the planning department mailed 207 public hearing notices. As of this writing, no public comments have been received for either cases, and the Abbott Loop Community Council did not provide comment. No objections to either case were received from reviewing agencies found in Attachment Per AMC 2103070C2, the Planning and Zoning Commission may submit a recommendation of approval if the amendment meets the following criteria. Criteria A is met. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to address one or more of the following: a change in provisions or assumptions from those of which the comprehensive plan is based, and identification of new issues, needs, or opportunities are not adequately addressed in the comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting an amendment from compact mixed residential medium, I'm sorry, the applicant is requesting an amendment to compact mixed residential medium to allow for greater residential development on a historically vacant and underutilized parcel. The Anchorage housing market analysis completed in 2012 included population and housing projections over a 20-year timeline. This 20-year projection concluded the need for 6,909 new multifamily dwelling units by 2030 to accommodate population growth. These projections were further verified based on recent estimate of potential housing units per zoning district conducted as part of the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. The analysis shows a gap of 7,900 residential units by 2040. Given other factors such as stagnant income wages and aging population and dwindling vacant residential land available for development, this predicament demands vacant residential land available for development. This amendment will allow for identical or greater residential housing density within the subject parcel. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment, along with the corresponding rezone request, is in response to the growing demand for residential development in Anchorage Bowl. The proposed amendment will allow for greater development flexibility while conserving the Class C wetlands that encumber the subject parcel, which were not adequately addressed in the previous 2005 rezone. The need for residential land within Anchorage is well documented within the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, and the amendment to compact mixed residential medium is one step towards achieving this goal of more residential development. Criteria B is met. This request maintains the internal consistency of the comprehensive plan by promoting more residential development within a transit supportive development area that is centrally located near schools, commercial, and employment centers. Due to the predicted shortage of residential land within the Anchorage Bowl, it is imperative that residentially zoned land not be lost as a result of any comprehensive plan amendment. Criteria C is met. Amending this parcel's classification from compact mixed residential low to compact mixed residential medium will allow for the expansion of residential uses within an existing neighborhood. Criteria D is met. The request is consistent with goals 1, 2, 4, and 7 of the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. Criteria E is met. The proposed amendment is consistent with the locational criteria for the requested land use description of compact mixed residential medium detailed on pages 5 and 6 of this report. The department finds that the approval criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment is met. The department recommends approval of this amendment. Case 2023-0020 is a request to rezone this parcel from R2MSL, mixed residential district with special limitations, to R3 mixed residential. The subject parcel was previously rezoned in 2005 from R2A, two-family residential, to R2MSL, mixed residential with special limitations, per AO 2005-36, included in Attachment 5. The restrictive special limitation states the following: A neo-traditional design consistent with the drawing submitted to the assembly on April 12, 2005, shall be utilized for all development on this property. The special limitation expires upon the final certificate of occupancy for the last unit constructed on this property. Following the approval of this zoning amendment in 2005, the property has remained undeveloped and has changed ownership from the original applicant, Alaska Showcase Homes, to the existing owner and applicant, the Peterson Group. The restrictive special limitation, AO 2005-36, was required with specific development in mind, and removal of this special limitation will facilitate the residential development of this historically vacant and underutilized parcel. The development potential of this subject parcel is constrained by the presence of Class C wetlands, and the intended dwelling units per acre of AMC 210402OF is likely unachievable due to the physical constraints on the property, which should have been revised following the previous zoning map amendment. Per AMC 210316CE, the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend approval to the assembly for final approval of the rezoning if the rezoning meets the following criteria. Criteria 1 is met. This rezoning is in the long-term interest of the citizens of Anchorage and promotes public health, safety, and general welfare. The proposed rezoning provides an opportunity for the petitioner to develop a vacant residential lot in a manner that conserves the wetlands which encumber the lot while providing additional multifamily housing units. Criteria 2 is met. The rezone is consistent with the Anchorage 2040 land use plan policies 1.1, 1.4, 2.1, 2.3, 4.2, 4.3, and 7.1, further detailed on pages 4 and 5 of this report. Criteria 3 is met. The proposed rezone is consistent with the purpose of the R3 district. Criteria 4 is met. Negative impacts are not anticipated to surrounding properties. The proposed R3 mixed residential zoning district designation is consistent and compatible with the surrounding residential uses of mixed densities. Criteria 5 is met. Public water and sewer services are available to this parcel, and the petition site is within the police and fire service areas. Criteria 6 is met. The proposed zoning is not anticipated to result in significant adverse impacts. The site is encumbered with Class C wetlands, and the proposed rezone will allow development pattern that reduces the impact to the natural environment while increasing the development potential and allowed densities. Criteria 7 is met. The proposed rezoning is not anticipated to result in significant adverse impacts to adjacent land uses. The rezoning results in a consistent land use and zoning across the developed subject parcel. Criteria 8 is met. The proposed zoning map amendment to the R3 mixed residential district is an implementing district of the compact mixed residential medium classification, which will result in consistent land use patterns. Criteria 9 is met. The proposed rezoning will not result in a split zone lot. The department finds that the criteria for a rezone are met. The department recommends approval of the rezoning from R2MSL, mixed residential district with special limitations, to R3 mixed residential district.
Thank you for that presentation. I don't see any initial questions from the commission, so we'll open it up to the petitioner. You've got, since the cases are combined, you don't have to use it all, and feel free to reserve time for rebuttal as well.
Yeah, I see myself using about 2 minutes. My name is Tony Hoffman. I'm with the Boote Company, and I'm here tonight representing Bob Peterson, who's in the audience, and on this rezone and comp plan change we're talking about. Also with me tonight is Grant Matthews with Triad Engineer. He's gonna be the project engineer as we progress through the different stages of this. I'd also like to thank staff for a very thorough and full report. To start with, it, no matter what development scenario we were gonna look at on this property, the site plan that was approved in 2005 was just not feasible. It was a sprawling type of what they call neo-traditional, and I'm, you know, still unclear exactly what that means, but it was a site plan that would have chewed up the whole site. Because it's inundated with the wetlands and a lot of, there's some site constraints that we grade and other things we really have to consider, we decided rather than just going back to R2M, we would rezone this to R3. So the current plan on the site, and it's not fully developed, is to build a compact type of unit that has garage below and 3 stories, so it will be a vertical construction. And it'll minimize a lot of the site disturbance. That's why we're asking for the R3, so we can get the height, basically. The site constraint, even with that kind of a footprint, will not allow us much more than what we could get with the R2M density. It will allow us some more flexibility, and we may get over the 30 units, but it's, until we get into a full site plan and look at all the other issues with the site and really start digging holes, we're not gonna know what we're gonna get into. It's gonna be, it's gonna be wet, and it's gonna take a lot, it's gonna be very challenging. So it is a very good site for this type of development, we feel, because it's right on the transit corridor, and it is supported by most of the components of the comp plan. However, the comp plan does indicate it as being the mixed residential lower density. We need the medium density to get R3, and that's why we're doing the comp plan change. And that kinda, it did catch me off guard, but it really wasn't a difficult thing to address because it is, because it's on the transit corridor and near the schools, it's a very easy, it's easy to envision this type of development in this, on the corridor there. The bus stop is right across the road, it's very well lit, and it's a signaled intersection at Lower Road in Lakota's. When they upgraded the road in 94, I think, they actually built an approach up on Lower Road that fronts the whole property, and the curb ends right there. So it's, it's really gonna help us develop the site as well as open up other possibilities up the hill to the east, up Lower Road. There are some really nice properties up there, but there's, it's a gravel road and it's, or maybe strip paved, I think it's gravel, but it, you know, it's just one of those areas on that east side of Lower Road that's really, it's a nice spot, and there is some good ground up there. So this will kind of help that progression, we feel. So we're gonna start here at this intersection, though. So other than that, I don't know if I have anything else to add about the rezone or the comp plan. I believe this is the highest and best use of the property and a lot more responsible than this sprawling site plan, this neo-traditional site plan they approved in 2005. You wanna add anything? Or is it the petitioner's time?
Sure, I'll just say a few words.
Okay. Bob Peterson is the owner, and he's speaking with me tonight, and he wants to add a few
Good evening, Commissioners. So, per usual, Tony's said satisfactorily everything that needs to be said about the property. Would like to add that I've owned it for, I think, 16 years now, and looking forward to developing it. It's nicely located, a good piece of property, just very challenging, and this particular pursuit is the right way to develop it. My company's done a lot of successful development over the last 40 years in Anchorage, Eagle River, and Gerwood, and this is likely going to be my last and best. So give it to me, and we're off. Thank you.
That's all we have to say. If anybody's got any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner Pulis.
The 2 comments I saw in there that aren't a big deal, I drive by this property quite a bit, and I know the property, and I think it's probably pretty good development. MOA requested lower road improvements, and AWU said you gotta extend the mains a little bit. You guys are gonna comply with that, pretty much?
Yep. Yeah, we understand that.
Commissioner Ron, any questions?
No, Chair, thank you for checking.
Okay, I don't see any further questions at the moment, thanks. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public if there's anyone here today wishing to speak to this case. Feel free to come forward. Okay, seeing no one come forward, you're welcome to use your rebuttal time. You've got 14 minutes and 57 seconds.
No, I have nothing to add. If there are any questions, we're here.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What's the will of the body? Commissioner Krishna.
Sure, sure. I'll go ahead and move in case 2023-0024 to approve to amend the land use designation for approximately 2.1 acres of land classified as compact mixed residential low in the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, land use plan map to compact mixed residential medium.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Eber. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. I would like to note that the approval criteria are met, in my opinion, that we did not receive any testimony from members of the public here tonight, and that there were no public comments and no community council comments received in the course of this, which I think indicates that there is no objection by, or no voiced objection by members of the public at this time to this request. Furthermore, I think that the applicant has noted that they're seeking to minimize impacts to the Class C wetlands on the site and add housing at a time when there's a big gap in the housing that Anchorage needs. So I will leave my comments there.
Thank you, Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Ron, since you're not on the system here, I'm just gonna look for you to jump in if you do have any comments at any point. Seeing nothing further, we'll go ahead and call the vote for case 2023-0024.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, votes in favor, that motion passes, leaving us with case 2023-0020. Commissioner Spinelli.
I move in case 2023-0020 to approve the rezone of one parcel from R2MSL, mixed residential district with special limitations, to R3 mixed residential district.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I intend to support the motion. I think this is a good use of the land. It makes sense on the side of Lake Otis to go to R3, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, seeing nothing further, I'll just note for this one as well, we didn't receive any comments from the public, and we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
8 votes in favor, that motion passes. Brings us to the next case on the agenda, which is 2023-0025. Is there a report from staff?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a conditional use application for commercial food production in the B3 General Business District. The site has de facto, has a conditional use permit for a 5,897 square foot coffee roasting production space in the existing building since it was established under the old zoning code. Cloddy Brothers Coffee Company is requesting conditional use approval for a brand-new 13,567 square foot coffee roasting building on the east side of the property. The petitioner held a community meeting with the Abbott Loop Community Council on November 7th of 2022, and the Abbott Loop Community Council voted unanimously to support the project. 257 public hearing notices were mailed on March 16th, and no written responses were received from the public. This type of development is required to spend 10% of total project costs bringing the site closer to conformance with current site design and development requirements, and they've exceeded that with 11% of bringing characteristics to use in compliance. The planning department finds that the 9 standards of approval for a, for this application, the 9 approval criteria for a conditional use are met. There are no use-specific standards for commercial food production. Therefore, the planning department's recommending approval of this application, subject to Conditions 1, 2, and 3 on page 7 of your packet. The first 2 conditions of approval are standard. The third one is to enter into an alternative snow management agreement in accordance with code, and that's a standard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there representative from the petitioner?
Hello, thanks to the board and the commission members. My name is Ron Thompson. I'm representing Scope and the owners. The owners are in the building and here, if you had any questions for them. Basically, they're trying to enlarge or put in a new building more efficient, more effective for what they do on the site. And so as part of the conditional use process, we did meet the community members, we sent out flyers. There's quite a few that did contact me, and we gave them information. We gave, we did special renderings, 3D renderings to kind of show them how it was being built and everything. We moved, we ended up moving the building to the north 4 more feet to accommodate them, to give them a little bit more light. We moved it 1 foot to the east to make the site work, and then we took the roasting exhaust and moved them from middle of the building on the east side to the north wall as far as we could away. So in that route, we tried to accommodate as many things as we could, and that's why I think at the end... I think at the end, you know, everybody seemed to be fairly happy. We went to the community council, and they spoke highly. They were happy with the owner making the adjustments he's made over the years and buying more efficient and better equipment all the time to stay on the cutting edge of doing what he does, which also makes him a good neighbor. And so we believe that we've done everything that we could to make a use with a new building even better for the neighborhood than what it currently existed. So we think that we've met the criteria, as Francis has said. And so we worked hard with both sides and appreciate Francis and all his effort on this to try to get to this point to where everybody supported it. So we hope to have your support in this. Thanks.
Thank you. So I don't see many people out here at this point, but I'll still go ahead and open it up for the public if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this case. Okay, seeing no one come forward, you can go ahead and come for your rebuttal. You've got 7 minutes and 49 seconds left. Is there anything further you'd like to say?
No, I think I've said enough already. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And we have a question from one of our commissioners. Commissioner Polis.
Just a quick, easy question about the lighting. You guys, you got a little price for it. You know about how many lights you're going to have on site? One, two? Just enough to cover that new parking lot area? Where are they going to go?
They're in the parking lot. They're being placed in between the existing parking that was there. I think if I remember right, there's four lights, something like that. It's in the plans, but I was a question that I, it's been a while since I've seen the exact electrical site plan, but I think there were four lights being added, something like that.
Makes sense. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue or coming forward. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's the will of the body? Commissioner Polis.
I move in case 2023-0025 to approve the amendment to a conditional use for commercial food production, subject to conditions 1 through 3 shown on page 7 of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Polis. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. It meets the criteria for conditional use as noted by staff. We heard no public objection to the development. It's a continuation of basically the same use, just a new building and some site improvements that move the site towards compliance.
Thank you, Commissioner Polis. I'll just note as well that the application shows kind of a history of both prior to the application responding to concerns from the neighborhood and addressing them, and then also as part of the application process itself, it looks like there were a number of changes that were made to address potential concerns, which I think were well received because we haven't received any negative or any comments in opposition. Go ahead and call the vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, eight votes in favor, that motion passes. Brings us to case 2023-0028. Can we have a report from staff, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize in advance, this might be a lengthy staff report, just because I do have information to put on the record. So I'll begin. So over the last several years, implementing current Title 21, the planning department has become aware of several inconsistencies within it that may result in confusion for developers and/or achieving the regulation's intent. The proposed ordinance is intended to remove inconsistencies within Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, provide clarification, and better align regulations with current practices. This is a broad text amendment to Title 21 comprising of 17 different amendments that will affect various sections, and each amendment I'll go through per section in the draft AO. So Section 1 establishes a timeline in which a community meeting must be held prior to submitting an application for select entitlements, and those select entitlements require an applicant to conduct a community meeting to engage with the neighborhood about their proposal prior to applying to the planning department. However, there is no set timeline in which an applicant must conduct a community meeting before submitting their application. This has resulted in numerous situations where an application is submitted up to 18 months after the community meeting has been held. By this time, the community may have largely forgotten about the applicant's proposal or the makeup of their respective community council has changed. The planning department currently lacks any ability to require an applicant to update the community on their progress once a qualifying community meeting has been conducted. This amendment will correct this disconnect in the public process, and it will also be identical to the current pre-app meeting requirements. Second, this amendment will clarify the content of notice requirements to reduce confusion between the noticing of public hearings and community meetings. Community meetings are intended to be informal meetings between the developer and the community to encourage dialogue and address any concerns. Many draft notices of community meetings have been received by the planning department characterizing the community meeting as a public hearing. Public hearings have a formal tone to them and may discourage a curious community member from participating due to their intimidating nature. We aim to correct this situation through this clarifying amendment so that notices of community meetings are characterized as such to encourage public participation. For Section 2, it allows incidental changes to an established reinvestment focus area approved by the Assembly to be amended via Assembly Resolution, and reinvestment focus areas are adopted via Assembly ordinance, which can be a cumbersome process to go through, especially when it comes to incidental changes. So allowing the Assembly to make incidental changes via resolution is a bit of a quicker and easier process. For Section 3, it's going to correct and align the maximum floor area ratio allowed within the R4 district to the limits established in related code sections, and that corrects a code oversight that was mistakenly created when the floor area ratio under the bonus provisions for the R4 and R4A was increased in 2015, but the increase was not carried over to the district-specific standards. For Section 4, that's going to, again, correct the review process for non-residential uses with a gross floor area between 5,001 and 20,000 square feet within the B1B district. And this will establish a clear incremental review process for non-residential uses within the B1B based upon square footage. And the existing language in code has an overlap in the required review process for non-residential uses with a gross floor area between 5,001 and 10,000 square feet. Current Title 21 states that no additional planning review is required beyond that of Table 2105-1 for non-residential uses less than 10,000 square feet, but an additional subsection requires an administrative site plan review for non-residential uses between 5,001 and 20,000 square feet, and this overlap between 5,001 and 10,000 square feet creates confusion on what level of review is required. And when placed in this situation, the planning department is required that the more restrictive provision shall prevail, and thus an administrative site plan review would be required. Through this amendment, we aim to correct that. For Section 5, this is clarification on which zoning districts hazardous waste treatment facilities are allowed within Anchorage, and there's related code sections 8, 17, and 18 in this amendment. And this amendment corrects an oversight in the original Title 21 rewrite, which established and defined the use of hazardous waste treatment facilities, but it was not included in the table of allowed uses. So we had no guidance on where this use that was defined in code was actually allowed. So this amendment, we did take a look at other comparable uses in code to determine which zoning districts were appropriate. For Section 6, this is going to amend the use-specific standards affecting the required separation distance from an animal shelter, retail and pet services, animal boarding, and veterinary clinic from a residential district. This amendment is being proposed to correct in what we feel is an overburdened some code requirement that requires outdoor animal facilities, except those for large domestic animal facilities, to be separated from a residential use rather than a residential district. And the current language is viewed as overburdened some because it may force an animal services use to fully enclose their operations when next to either an undeveloped residential lot or a large lot residential district where the closest residential use may be hundreds of feet away. Additionally, this amendment will better align its intent to provide separation from a residential use to mitigate adverse impacts such as noise, odor, and runoff. For Section 7, that's going to establish the use-specific standards for the placement and operation of hazardous waste treatment facility. And again, this was previously covered in Section 5, or it's a related section, but the planning department has evaluated the operational characteristics of hazardous waste treatment facilities and has determined the proposed use-specific standards are appropriate to reduce adverse effects to neighboring properties, and will establish a public process for potentially impactful facilities. For Section 8, this is amending three accessory uses to clarify code requirements, align code language, and align code language with other code sections in current practice. These amendments will correct and clarify requirements based upon current practice and will improve language consistency between Title 21. Section 9 increases the allowable lot coverage for the R1, R1A, and R9 zoning districts to allow for greater utilization of lot area within single-family districts. We've noticed that current building trends place priority on designing large homes with which utilize the maximum or near maximum lot coverage allowed in the respective zoning district. Because of this, homeowners may not have the ability to construct accessory structures to include sheds, decks, and accessory dwelling units. Increasing the max lot coverage within the small lot, single-family residential districts will provide additional flexibility to homeowners and developers to construct accessory structures on their property. For Section 10, this is relocating an existing code section to a more appropriate section, and we are taking something from the residential design standards and moving it into the dimensional standards. And the reason being is that this regulation was often overlooked by residential designers and coder reviewers because it was kind of tucked away into the section of code that isn't so easily or frequently looked at. For Section 11, this provides developers the option to use temporary construction fencing or flagging to delineate the site disturbance envelope when developing within a steep-slope construction area. And this amendment has been requested by the development community to simplify the requirements and reduce building costs for development on steep slopes. The installation temporary construction fencing is meant to delineate where the site disturbance envelope on steep slopes is to reduce unintentional land clearing and retain both vegetation and slope stability. Allowing for the use of flagging or temporary construction fencing will accomplish this goal in the same manner while reducing the amount of necessary materials and labor hours in order to do so. For Section 12, it corrects the required amount of common private open space to be consistent with other dimensional standards and allows snow storage areas to be credited towards common private open space. This amendment will more closely align the minimum square footage of open space required per dwelling unit with the minimum dimension for a qualifying open space area. Although a minimum of between 100 square feet to 400 square feet of open space is required per dwelling unit depending upon the underlying zoning district, the current minimum dimension of 18 feet requires the builder to provide 324 square feet, that'd be 18 by 18, even when this amount may exceed what is required by the zoning district. Reducing the minimum dimension to 15 feet for residential uses and 12 feet for non-residential uses will bring the required minimum dimension closer to the total required open space amount. The minimum dimension is not being reduced to 10 feet because code also allows for site perimeter landscaping and interior space to be credited towards open space. These options help ensure that the open space requirements can be reasonably met while providing a functional amount of open space for residents. Second, snow storage areas may be credited towards common private open space, and this amendment is a clarification, given that snow storage areas may be credited towards open space under the snow disposal regulations, but are not explicitly credited under the open space regulations. For Section 13, this aligns code requirements with the observed off-street loading requirements for selected uses, and this amendment was requested by the traffic engineering department based upon their observations of off-street loading needs of various uses over the past few years. Current code requirements appear to be in excess of operational needs for the uses specified in the amendment. Thus, this amendment will reduce the off-street loading requirements to best align them with current demand. Section 14 corrects a gap in code requirements to provide landscaping in areas where site perimeter landscaping would otherwise be required, and reorganizes the approval and review process for multiple structures on a single lot to improve reading clarity. And the related sections are Section 11. This amendment will clarify and correct a current gap in the landscaping dimensions where the existing language requires landscaping within a dimension of 8 feet or less and 20 feet or more. This leaves developers and coder reviewers confused on what is required when the dimension is between 8 and 20 feet. This amendment will close this gap without creating more restrictive requirements. Second, this amendment will remove existing code language that is being relocated to Chapter 6. Third, this amendment will reorganize the review and approval process for multiple structures on a single lot to improve clarity. Lastly, the requirement for vehicle plugins to be provided is being removed. This is being requested from various property owners and managers due to the maintenance and operational challenges vehicle plugins create and their observed lack of use during the winter months. For Section 15, this is going to clarify that unit lots are exempt from lot depth-to-width ratio requirements, and with the depth-to-width ratio requirement being 1 to 3. For Section 16, this is a clarification on which zoning districts hazardous waste treatment facilities are allowed in within the Chugiak Eagle River zoning districts. And again, that's related to Sections 6 and 8 previously covered. And then Section 17 is a clarification that hazardous waste treatment facilities are not allowed within the downtown districts, and that is related to previously Sections 6, 8, and 17. In addition to these amendments, we have two extra code amendments that were not included in the original staff packet, but included as a supplement at last month's meeting. And the first text amendment is correcting a code reference in Anchorage Municipal Code 2105 within, that refers you to 2110, that no longer has the same purpose due to a recent amendment to the ADU regulations. And we had a sentence in code that pointed back, excuse me, it pointed from 2110 to 2105, but the corresponding section in 2105 was amended, so it pointed you kind of in the wrong direction. So given that the additional setback requirements were removed, this code reference is no longer necessary, but we do feel the original intent of that reference is preserved. And for the last amendment, it's going to be permitting the use of stormwater sediment management facilities within the PLI district, subject to approval of a conditional use permit. And the planning department has been approached by the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, who is interested in developing a new stormwater sediment management facility within their MLK Tudor Road Maintenance Campus. And the subject parcel is Zone PLI, which currently does not permit the use of stormwater sediment management facilities. And after review of the proposal, the planning department believes there is a benefit to this amendment, given that most stormwater sediment management facilities are owned and operated by government agencies, and the intent of the PLI district is to provide a land base for the use by government and quasi-government entities. Requiring approval of a conditional use permit prior to development will allow for a public review process and analysis of adverse impacts to surrounding properties and adjacent uses. And additionally, we did have one late public comment that was submitted, and that has been provided through supplementary packet number 1 for the commission's review this evening. And again, I apologize for the lengthy staff report, just a lot of information in there to cover, but I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. So, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll take advantage of the opportunity to kick us off, Ryan. Thanks for responding to my questions earlier. I think you clarified a lot of things that I had some confusion in my head about, so I appreciate that. The one piece I'm still a little confused on is the Section 2 and the minor amendments to the RFAs. And I think I'm understanding, I guess, and I maybe have two points of confusion. One is, I just want to confirm that the departments- One is, I just want to confirm that the department's understanding is that any minor amendment requires some action by the assembly and can't be resolved by the director in his or her own authority? Is that right?
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay. And I think part of my confusion on that draws from the next section in the code than the one that's amended here that is subpart three. I don't know if you have that section there with you.
Mr. Chair, the code book that I have in front of me actually is outdated.
Yeah, I had the same issue. Well, I don't need to get into that then, I guess. My remaining question then is just that what I find, I think, confusing about the proposed amendment is, is the way that I read it with adding that language in there. It almost makes it sound like the resolution approving the minor amendment is only applicable to other incidental changes and not the incidental changes in A, subsection A, B, and C. And I'm, I'm wondering if it might be more clear in 2103-116, subpart two, that initial paragraph, to just add a sentence that says, you know, assuming that's consistent with the intent, that, you know, all minor amendments may be approved by resolution of the assembly. Do you have thoughts on that?
Through the chair, that may be a bit of a departure from the intended process. I believe that any alteration of an RFA, a substantial alteration of an RFA, even those deemed to be minor amendments as referenced in A, B, and C, would have to be approved through a ordinance.
Okay, so the intent is that A, B, and C do require ordinance, it's just D that is the resolution?
That is my understanding. I believe that that's correct.
Okay, okay. Well, that's how I, that's how I read it. I just, it just confused me. Okay, that, that clarifies it for me. Commissioner Krishna.
I'll start with hazardous waste treatment facilities. So my understanding is that this was an existing use in code, but it was mistakenly left off of the table where we, you know, anyone could see which zoning districts it was allowed in. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
All right. Has anyone, that makes it sound like no one has attempted to sort of create a hazardous waste treatment facility since new Title 21 has been implemented. Is that correct? Or could you provide some examples of some facilities that are permitted under kind of this use?
Through the chair, we did have one individual a number of years ago that was interested in establishing this use, but it was very small scale, and it was the disposal of medical waste. And the way that he disposed of it, it's almost you bag it up and you put it into what looks like a washing machine, and it basically just chews it all up and spits it into little bits. But this use also encompasses large, you know, very industrial-looking types of facilities that could handle all sorts of hazardous material. We have not had any proposals, to my knowledge, for a facility of that size yet.
Thank you. Did you have any contact with any proposed operators or anyone who's in this sort of business during the course of putting together these amendments?
Through the chair, we have not. It was mainly an examination of existing code, similar uses in code, and given that it was already defined in code, we didn't want to tweak it beyond recognition, I guess.
All right. Thank you.
No, we got Commissioner George in the queue.
Through the chair, perhaps this is a question to staff or maybe to the consideration of the body, but I appreciated the question you posed regarding section six and the ordinance having to do with particularly animal boarding facilities and their proximity to residential districts versus uses. It sounds like we do not have a problem that could arise under the current code, where there's a requirement to screen these facilities, where if we allow it to be done, if the adjacent residential parcel is not developed, and then, to our surprise, a residential lot is developed on a residential lot that it's grandfathered, we could have a problem there. So I wonder what is the compelling reason that we would allow what would later be, have to be grandfathered as a non-conforming use, when the, I would think the presuming, the presumption is that a residential lot will have a residential use at some point. So I don't know if the staff kind of caught what I was saying there with that, but what is the compelling need for this change? Thank you.
Through the chair, this came up when we had a proposal for a renovation of an existing veterinary clinic that wanted to put a outdoor dog run in, and they were kind of between a rock and a hard place because they couldn't put the outdoor dog run in because they were directly abutting a residential district to the west, but the actual residential use was well over 100 feet away. So if we were to measure it to the use, they wouldn't have been able to have this additional amenity on-site. But then really looking at what's, what's the intent? The intent of this is to reduce impacts to a residential use. There are other regulations already in code under the noise ordinance when it comes to barking dogs, when it comes to excessive odor, smells, waste. Those are all dealt with other titles under Anchorage Municipal Code. So we didn't see any type of adverse impacts to the general public through this amendment. We just think this amendment is more appropriate for its intended purpose.
Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna.
Sorry, fellow commissioners. While we're on animals, I see that on page 21, section three is added as new language, outdoor keeping of wild animals is prohibited. Could you clarify if that is a new requirement that's being added to code or if that's just being relocated? Is that a new standard?
Through the chair, that will be a new standard, and that is a clarification that we felt was necessary, given recent challenges to code interpretations, that we needed to clarify that wild animals, keeping wild animals is prohibited.
Are you referring to the emus? I will, I will assume you are. That's a rather big one, I think. I feel bad wailing the community, the commission's time on the question of wild animals now, but I, I think I need a lot more information on that one, which is like, how many wild animals are being kept? What, what kind of like code impacts are we seeing? And is, is this a code thing or is this like an assembly legislative thing, right? I'm, I'm, yeah.
Through the chair, I could speak to that, I believe, to the best I can here, but this is under the outdoor keeping of animals, which is a different accessory use than large domestic animal facility. So this clarifies in here that it's for domestic animals, which domestic animals, I do believe, are defined in code, but we just felt it was necessary to have an additional clarification in there that the outdoor keeping of wild animals is prohibited in an effort to remove all doubt that you could only have a domesticated or domestic, and I'll retract that, I'll stick with the term domestic because domesticated and domestic, I've come to find out, have different meanings. But domestic animals, that, that's the only limitation. It has to be something that there's a human benefit from, whereas the keeping of wild animals would fall under the zoo use, which is not an accessory use, it can only be a principal use.
Commissioner George.
Thank you. Through the chair, I feel I have a unique perspective to add here. I house a wild animal in my setback. I have a snowy owl that is both state and federally permitted at my residence through the bird treatment learning center. So I'm not sure if I should declare a conflict at this time, because this would directly impact me. But there are some animals that are housed in anchors that are wild, so I just would note that for the record. Thank you.
And I guess I feel obliged to add at least my perspective that with respect to your question about a conflict, I personally don't see a conflict issue by being affected by any particular generalized revision of this nature, since, you know, in some fashion or another, these will all affect all of us. But if any commissioner feels otherwise, feel free to chime in, and we can evaluate Well, I guess, while the commissioners are considering their thoughts on this one, I don't think we've yet opened it up to testimony from the public. I see we have one person here. I don't know if you're, anyone present is planning to speak to this matter, but if you are, feel free to come forward. Okay, it looks like we don't have any members from the public looking to testify to this So I guess one option too, I don't, I don't know if people are evaluating this wild animals question or not, but we could get a general main motion on the table and then through the amendment process, discuss changes or revisions to that piece. Commissioner Krishna.
I'm not making a motion right now. I think I just want to make one more question to staff, and I, I guess that would be around section nine on the max lot coverage changes. To my mind, those are the most significant sort of new content being proposed in these, in this omnibus. I'm hoping you can just speak to that a little bit more. Thank you.
Through the chair, so this was a request that the development community approached us, and we did evaluate it. I took a look at a number of cities that both have, are similar in population, that they experience a winter climate, and that they've had positive population growth over the last 10 years. And I did a comparison on what their lot coverage maximums were, and I found a variety of answers. Some were up to 60%, some had no max lot coverage, some were more restrictive than we are. Some didn't treat it so much as maximum lot coverage, but as a required open space, so that for a, you know, single-family home, you'd have to provide as little as a 12-by-12 area in the backyard for enjoyment for the homeowners. But this amendment also aims to sort of bring a little bit of equity to the max lot requirements in the rural residential districts. And for example, in the existing R9, you know, it's 5% lot coverage, which the minimum lot size in the R9 is two acres, so that results in 4,356 square feet of building footprint that you can have. And if you compare that to the most common rural residential district, which is the R6, that's a one-acre district that has 30% lot coverage, and that allows for 13,068 square feet of building footprint. So it seemed a bit contrary to us that, you know, on a, the predominant rural residential district, you could have 13,068 square feet of building footprint, but in the larger two-acre district, you could only have 4,356. And then in the R1, you know, currently at 30% max lot coverage, that's 1,800 square feet of building footprint, going to 40%, that would be 2,400 square feet of building footprint. And if you compare that to the R1A, which currently has 30% lot coverage, that's 2,520 square feet of building footprint. And then bumping that up to 40% would result in 3,360 square feet of building footprint. So we're just trying to kind of align this with current housing demand and building trends, as well as provide additional flexibility for the placement of accessory structures to include accessory dwelling units. And I'd be happy to clarify any further if that spurs any questions.
Mr. Paulus. I couldn't help myself, and I Googled wild animals permitting, and fish and game permits wild animals, certain types. Do you have a permit? Yeah. Seems like a weird one now. It's permitted through other agencies. Thought I'd say that.
I move in case 2023-0028 to recommend to the Anchorage Assembly approval amending AMC Title 21 to align Title 21 with current practices and provide clarity for implementation of code and related matters.
And Commissioner Spinelli, I assume your motion refers to both the original packet and then the supplemental?
Yes.
Packet and amendments?
Both. All, all, both amendments added.
All right, thank you. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner George. Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to speak to your motion?
I am generally in support of the motion, but open to amendments.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to strike the addition on page 21 of our packets that the, specifically just the sentence in section three that says, "Outdoor keeping of wild animals is prohibited."
I see Mr. Yella in the queue.
I see Mr. Yella in the queue.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just something that would help me out later on when I'm typing up the final decision and resolution for the commission, because we have a draft ordinance that has line numbers on the left-hand side of the page, if the commissioners could just state when making amendments which lines those are affecting, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
And I'll just throw in one thought for consideration, maybe a question for staff, is if that piece were to be struck, would staff recommend revising as well the addition of the word domestic in, on page 20, line 17, and removing that addition, so that those requirements would still apply across the board?
Through the chair, if we were to strike line 29 from page 21, I believe we would still, we would prefer to keep the reference to domestic on lines 17 and 18 on page 20, just to make sure that that is a crystal clear, exactly, that that applies to the outdoor keeping of domestic animals.
Okay. So Commissioner Krishna, I think it's with you. I don't know if you wanted to clarify your motion, or is your, your, your motion was to strike the outdoor keeping of wild animals from line 29 on page 21, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Commissioner Krishna, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. I think this is, obviously, it's kind of interesting to talk about wild animals, a thing that this commission has not gotten to do yet, at least in the four years I've been seated. But I, I do want to speak to why I'm focused on this one, which is that in my time on the commission, there have been very, very few, maybe no examples of places where we have sought to, or been asked to create new prohibitions on uses that cover the entire Anchorage bowl. In general, I understand that there's a need to create flexibility and to strongly understand the impacts, especially when we're making code more restrictive. This is one that we hadn't talked about before, seen before. I believe that I, for one, need more information about potential impacts and kind of the justification for creating new restrictions at this time. Having seen this for the first time, I don't believe that I can make that, that decision without additional information.
Commissioner Spinelli, I see you're in the queue. I don't know if that's a...
I, I had a question for staff. What's the definition of keeping, I guess? Because there's wild animal, I live in a 10,000 square foot lot, but I have wild animals in my yard at times, and I'm just curious on the, what, what we mean by keeping.
Through the chair, I, I don't believe it's defined in, in Title 21, but I'm going to, going to check that. Yeah, so through the chair, we, we don't have a definition for keeping. So I think that keeping, you know, would default to sort of the Merriam-Webster's definition, you know, being in possession of, taking care of.
Look, 16A appears to do it right up front. Page 20, line 3 of the 3 through 6 or so.
Oh, yes, through the chair. So that's, that's the definition of outdoor keeping of animals, you know, restraining or restricting the movement of animals outside of a principal structure by any means not involving the continued presence and/or participation of a human being. My apologies, I thought that was, you know, the term of, of keeping itself is what, what was being asked, so I apologize there.
Okay, seeing no further, oh, no, Commissioner George.
Just very briefly to the chair, if not for the consideration of the Bird Treatment and Learning Center and the Moose Mamas that rescue moose, maybe just think about Star the Reindeer. I don't think we want to be responsible for telling them they can't keep the reindeer there anymore, so, thank you.
And Mr. Yella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Star the Reindeer is legally non-conforming and grandfathered, and she can remain in place regardless of the outcome of this code amendment. Thank you.
If Star ever has any babies, though, that might be a different discussion. All right, seeing nobody further in the queue, we'll go ahead and call a vote on the amendment to strike the reference to outdoor animals from page 21.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, votes in favor that motion to amend passes. That brings us back to the main motion as amended. And we'll call the vote, seeing no further comments there either.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, six votes in favor that motion passes as well. We are not quite yet done, though. That's the end of our public hearing items, but we have our annual election of officers, which we bumped to the end. Don't have much experience with this process, but I've been in this position for at least a couple of cycles now, and I'm more than happy to give up my chair for someone who's been here as well. Well, I'm not making any motions. Commissioner Krishna.
I would like to nominate Chair Gardner to continue in the role as chair.
That motion is seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Krishna, may I speak to your motion?
I don't have any additional comments.
Well, I, I'm willing to do it, I guess is, is what I could say, but if there's any shred of interest from anybody else, please feel free to speak up. Commissioner Spinelli, you're in the queue.
Well, I wasn't going to make any motions either, and I'm more than willing to support you, but I also agreed with Mr. Gardner that I would accept the chair if that was the will of the body as well.
I don't know, I don't know how it works. Okay. Yeah, Commissioner, you've...
A withdraw?
That is fine by me. We can do a friendly withdraw. Not a friendly withdraw, it's a... Okay, now we're looking for a motion. Commissioner Winchester.
I nominate Commissioner Spinelli to serve as chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Okay, we'll go ahead and call a vote, seeing no comments.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we need a... I'm sorry, six votes in favor that motion passes. Okay, so we need a vice chair as well, looking for a motion. I know that Commissioner Krishna, I think, does an excellent job as vice chair. But I'm not allowed to make a motion yet, so... Commissioner Spinelli, do I see?
Yeah, I move to nominate Commissioner Krishna as co-chair.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Okay, seeing no one commenting, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, six votes in favor that motion passes. And I think that's the end of it. Oh, Commissioner comments?
I just, on the record, wanted to thank you for chairing this commission. You always run a very efficient and well-thought-out meeting, and your comments are well-thought-out and articulate. And so I'd like to also thank Chairman Spinelli for stepping up, and Chairman Krishna, you can run this thing anytime you want to, so thanks for, it's just a pleasure to be part of this commission and serve amongst you people, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winchester. And I guess we'll take advantage of the opportunity. I appreciate your comments. And to welcome our new commissioner as well, Commissioner George, who we look forward to working with, and thank you for joining, since we've been short in numbers as well, but I can already tell that you'll be a valued addition to the commission, so thank you. Okay, I think that's it. We'll look for motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Pulis, seconded by Commissioner Eberger. No objection, we are adjourned.